All right, let's get the show on the road. Welcome to the November two thousand twenty five Village of Fayetteville Planning Board. Only two items on the agenda, but excited to hear each of them. Uh Jim, there you are. Give us a rundown and. Because of the way that some of the materials came through. I'm not quite sure what's being proposed in relation to our discussions over there. So if you have something, put your hand on as you're referencing a color, I appreciate it.
Well, so I guess. We've got the agenda to start off with. We've got our sign permit. We've got a little bit kind of work through, then I assume that we would always come back.
I don't want to hear the color. Let's have the color discussion first, otherwise I don't know what that sign is going on.
The colors of the sign application drawings. Or late with the other colors, so that's where you go.
They're neutral, they're not. Yeah, because we didn't know what the colors are. So do you want me to start?
Yep, let's start with the building photos. Actually, with um. Are we on so that we can hear people? Was your designer going to be?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, she was toast.
She she's not able to.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did not know about that, so I don't have the link.
We don't have it set up.
I didn't know about it, yes.
Can I do it on speakerphone?
Certainly.
Uh yeah, I'll go with that, yeah.
Let me see.
Sorry, I didn't communicate that after. It's been on and I'm used to it, you know, it's one of those days. It absolutely has.
I understand.
Unfortunately, I wasn't up early for fishing. I was traveling.
I can't help you.
There's a little tightener.
Well, I can, if you want, I just.
Yeah.
Kind of through what we're proposing is that the amended color scheme. Um, and so. The uh. The color that we're that we'd like to use on the on the. Stucco on the tower and the stucco that's in the under the cafe windows. Is this Fields of Gold, which is a Benjamin Moore color. Um, it's, you know, from the color that. Started, they put on the building, this is a. That notched down a couple degrees in the in the color palette. Um, and so. The color that's on the back, and you guys should have all gotten these, and these represent the actual, these are actual color chips. So. Everything obviously is hundred percent accurate, so these color chips are accurate. So um. So with that said, this color around here represents that curry that's currently on the building, just to give you as a reference. To uh what we're proposing um as a uh as a as a revised amended color. Um, the uh the the bump out for the dining room, the woodwork. Below the sill line is this uh guacamole, the green. And then from the sill and the sill above is this darker, deeper um. Uh cabbage patch is the color, eventually more color. And then the uh the parchment is the Candace awnings that are going over the windows. And so that's the. That's the color scheme. Um. And then. I know we talked about some different material up here and I've got some drawings. That I will. Not while we're waiting.
That chip in the lower right corner, so that that is what the building is now for reference, that's almost.
Now, the one behind it.
The one behind it, okay.
Very soon.
The ch- the chip on top.
Chip on top is proposed.
Okay.
And that's goal extra texture.
That's okay.
It's the what's there now. So because at that meeting, we've talked about a few other miscellaneous things in the plaza, you know, so we put in screens, some window film, some other things. So that's all in this kind of amended site plan package. Um, and I've. With kind of highlighted and blue. Those changes that have changed.
The mark. My proof, son.
Yep, yep.
I have a full size set too. Not yet. Still found.
Why change this later?
So the uh the the front elevation also references. The uh. Roof. Covering. I thought I understand. Call was along and also. This roof here originally had proposed and was approved to be a standing C finish over the existing frame. As it turns out, when contractors came along and they started looking at the structure of it, it's just not. It's not capable of carrying that extra weight of the metal and the and the attachment that it needs. And so um the cost has been pretty big to place that whole structure, put a new structure on there. So what they're gonna do is it's it's basically gonna be exactly the same. Material is there now, this is gonna be a dark bronze, you could match all the other accent colors that we've been using. So instead of having grids, they'll just be smooth. So just like it is, you know. But I think that kind of played in with our color scheme and materials talking about. None have uh. That's reference on F T three. Um, and so that uh those elevations. And they've got kind of the the revision cloud is a full highlight, but also another left corner is the finished material schedule. So that kind of calls out um. These colors. You can get on the quote. Like your phone or? And of course. Peter was our the designer and the decorator who's been putting together our color schemes and and all the interior packages and finishes and everything. Obviously, he's gonna be able to speak. You know, those want to help. The reasons and the for the color selected. The nearest.
Hi, I can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we we can hear you. If you would, go ahead, take us through this. Agreed, agreed.
Next time, maybe next time in in Syracuse, we'll plan, we'll plan to get together.
There's treats actually works. All right, so so walk us through your your thought process on these colors.
Okay, so the co- Jim, which are the ones, since I'm not there, I'm not sure what you're presenting. Are you, which are you, which one are you sharing with them?
We've got the rendering up, that's the uh the fields of gold. Um, and it's the rendering that you did, and then I applied um actual paint chips, actual paint samples. Um, to the board so they can actually see the the real color, you know, because it's shifted a little bit during printing.
Sure.
So I know that we um we wanted to go with something that wasn't as bold. As the mustard that we currently have on the space. And so we went through a few different options and had a few different variations, but this is the one that I thought we. We thought was a nice compromise because it complements the palette and the experience of what's happening on the interior of the space. Um, while giving everyone like a little bit of a hint of what's happening from the exterior. So, and we also thought that it does complement some of the brick that we do have going on throughout the rest of the complex. And some of the color palettes, so we thought it was a little bit more muted, but what are your thoughts looking at them?
So you said the mustard color that's on right now, there is a curry color. That's orange.
It's a, that's right, I'm saying more mustardy, but yes, it is a curry. It's I think the actual name of the paint chip is curry. Um, so we thought that the color of the fields was a little bit more muted than the curry. So we wanted to first share this with you, see what your thoughts were, and then just take it from there.
So look, it's very, very similar. If you read the description of the color, it does say mustard, which is. That we thought they had to have lost.
Peter's gonna hear this.
Expecting a little. I was expecting some options, I guess. You mentioned options at the beginning. Do you have other colors, like darker colors that maybe are not as.
Right, something a little slightly more muddy.
There is an alternative option that we also explored that I think is definitely a little bit more in the tonality that you originally saw. Jim, do you have that option with you? To share with them? Do you want me to?
So that's the that's the curry there.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that. It it may be more of a color accurate.
So what is the other option that she's?
And okay, so there's. Option two, and this one is a. This is a Yellowstone. And that's really about the only thing that's changed. Um, you know, the accent colors uh remain, and it's the it's this. That's gone to Yellowstone, and that's what you kind of see there.
What's the color number of Yellowstone?
Two zero two.
Two zero three was the other one.
This one's two zero two, so it's it's just a one step up on the color wheel.
Yeah.
Uh.
Anybody else happen to normally carry around the makeful?
No, this is my jet.
What, do you wanna?
I just wanted to see, because sometimes when you're sending us. You know, the printed version, it really doesn't look.
Well, that's, these are actual colored chips.
But.
These squares.
But you're putting it on top of a printed version like there.
This one's actually pretty close.
Yeah, I'm talking about the lower one where you always, you're putting it over the curry.
So that's the curry in the back, and this is curry here.
Very close, let me see, see.
So that's probably there.
You know, seriously, two.
It's a.
You know, the curry.
Looking for the other options.
Two zero two, two zero three, oh, um. Yeah, they're that old.
So. And that and Yellowstone is another.
I mean, I guess the averages are so similar that they're not really making.
Jim, do you have, do you have mustard seed option with you? Do you want me to, what I can do is I can. I'm I'm away from my computer right now, but I can text them to you, so you can share them with everyone. As well, then that way we can look at the variations and come up with a compromise that makes everyone happy.
It's just me speaking, not for the board, but I'm leaning. I'm leaning towards less mustard.
The less mustard, okay.
The mustard seed.
Or the or the less curry.
But. Well, to to me, I see them much the same, I'm leaning more Yellowstone direction.
Okay, well, the the mustard seed color, it's a paint, actually the name of. It's a name of the uh the paint. And it's actually, it's a, it's a very, I think it's a very nice.
What number is the mustard seed? What number is that mustard seed?
What number is it, Jim? Because it's not in front of me right now. Jim, do you know what that mustard seed was? Let me see if I can.
Yeah.
You got a Benjamin Moore?
It's a Benjamin Moore color, yes.
Good. We're making this is a budget amendment to the site plan. Let me do this here, just just like this?
Yeah, yes, okay. Keep requiring public here.
Well, she's digging that up, Jim, let me ask you something that's not probably related. The shielding for the, just while we have this.
Yes.
Shielding for this?
Yes.
Is this mounted to the front of the building or is this on the roof?
No, it's back, so it's only like um. Whatever might be appropriate, maybe it's eighteen inches around, you know, airspace around the equipment.
Okay.
But so, but it's further back.
I couldn't tell she was mounted to.
Yeah, it's it's hard on the flat, oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Hard to tell.
Yeah, it's the colors. Oh, you got that? Oh, was it in?
There it is, right. It's very green. Maybe she, she would have to.
So which? Which one is she's she calling mustard?
Right here, this one right here. It's very green, though, it seems like you would probably have to change your other colors.
Yeah.
I guess the best thing to do is to give us. Palettes, options with a palette of all of the colors that. You know, that you think go together, because I think if you use this. If you use a mustard seed, I don't know that your cabbage or your. Amocado or, you know.
Yes, I do, I can hear. So all of, so the greens are meant to complement all the color choices.
Okay.
That we chose, and so I'm gonna send you some screenshots. And bear with me, I'm so sorry, I didn't know we had a meeting today, I'm actually at a game, so I'm like hiding away in the bathroom trying to present you everything. Um, so let me send you. This. Jim, take a look at this and just share it with them if you can.
This one.
And I'll try and pull up some of the. Guide a little bit better.
That one is kind of green.
Oh, it is, oh, compared to this, but it's getting closer.
Well, it's funny, when you when you put it against that, it's it's no longer green to my eyes.
This is, it looked very good.
Gonna change every color, so every color that we choose. Change all green reds, but I think that they're a nice compliment to all the options. So Jimmy just sent them over to you.
Email, oh, they're there.
I texted, I texted it. I think this one is probably the one that will be a nice compliment for everyone. And then I will also send over the rendering.
Or either.
What what is that?
It's mustard.
It should be pretty close, and it's two two two.
Yeah.
Is that what you?
Yeah.
What is that next one further?
Golden Garden and Yellow Bisc. Golden Garden.
So we've got Dorset is gold. Which is uh H C historical color A.
And green, you see.
They're in the. You don't, you're still.
They're too heavy.
I uh I kind, I think she actually finally gave me a new fan to. It took me years to get it. I'm, I'm the same as her.
Historical H C.
So Jim, I'm gonna send you some screenshot. So everyone can see the difference. And how all the different colors work together.
Been tired to tell, like, at least now the renderings are showing to you.
What's the number of the one that will present that's again?
Right there?
Yeah.
Two two one.
Two two, what's the next one?
Next one, that was two zero.
Two zero and two two one.
This looks very similar to the one we approved.
It does.
That's what I believe we have at home.
So Jim, I'm texting you now, renderings to share with everyone.
You're making.
And let me know. If there are any questions. Jim, did you get the messages?
I did.
Okay, perfect.
So. Okay, well, those are the two that we have, the yellow, yellow fields of gold and the um Yellowstone. So that's what we're presenting, that was that.
Yellowstone or the mustard seed, they're similar. The mustard seed is a little bit, um, so for example, the Yellowstone is a little bit cooler, it has a little bit more of the warmer tones in it. The mustard seed is a little bit. Cooler, so it has a little bit of um tiny bit of green. In it as well, whereas the mustards, the Yellowstone has a little bit more. Orange and pinker tones. I think of the options based on the original one that I think you saw, that Jim had shared with you. I think the choices that I think would work best for us would either be the. Yellowstone or the mustard seed. So mustard seed will be a little bit lighter. The Yellowstone will be a little bit deeper, but have a few more of those warmer tones in it. Mustard seed has a cooler tones.
Stuck in what we approved, but.
Well, what I believe what was approved is closer to the mustard seed tone.
We almost have to take that over to the brick, you know, because it's so green and. The green and red are compliment. But we didn't see, it's hard to view in the dark right now. Because this isn't really representative. It's more brown here.
This is, this is approved. Which the uh.
Which, you were pretty close with your rendering.
It's pretty dark compared to those. Nice, because it's darker than what the plaza was, you know, like that was your, before you had like the lighter.
Mm-hmm.
Steps to this. Wilmington Tan was the one that was approved in the additional render.
It was a fun.
But then the body of the building was like a lighter creamy, what was it called?
Let's just, let's go on. Something or other.
Which was more in the family of the one.
This is kind of the main that. Color.
The body of the building, yes, they told us there that would only wrap around to the restaurant, which is what we were told. So the side of the plaza would still be that white color, which is why we have the. She was like the contrast, we originally said we want this to feel like one building, not two. And now it feels like two, when you come up the side, it's very, very bright, and the other one's very white.
So, so the awnings there, that parchment. The canvas is is very similar to the plaza body color, so that was kind of meant to. Bring that around to the front a little bit, you know, to help tie it together, you know, and thread it through the front.
It's really where the, you know, where the indent is where the door is, it's very obvious where the ends and start. But yeah, I agree, it helps to bring that. So tell me about the roof before we. Finally, because like everything has to go together, is when it says acrylic, it's not canvas then, or does it look like canvas or does it look shiny?
It's it's exactly what's on there now.
There it is.
So it 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 has a little bit of a sheen to it, doesn't have a real matte, you know, cloth look to it. But it is a, it is a kind of a composite, you know, cloth and and plastic kind of pushed together, you know, for durability.
Okay.
You know, and it needs to stretch over that frame too.
So it acts like fabric, though, where you stretch it?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and like I said, it's exactly what's on there.
So that was never painted.
That what's there, I think was.
Because I think it was a different color, right?
Yeah, it was. It was like, yeah, that, yeah.
It was green. Yeah, so so it probably won't look like that one, because there's a coat of.
It'll be similar, it's it's kind of, I mean, the way it looks weathered right now, it looks kind of a matte, it's not shiny.
Yeah. And that's gonna be the dark bronze.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
We're messing up for the end, I think.
That's, yeah. So we're doing, right now, we're talking about this in context to signage, because the signage appears. It's nice, I like it, I think it's painted, the pin stripe is painted on the building, is that right, or the whole side?
So the, the east facing, um, the parking lot side is is painted on to the stucco. Um, so the lettering and the the line work around it. And then the sign on the front facing Genesee Street is gonna be the um, the standalone pin mounted. Um, letters that are, you know, pressed to the, through the building, and they're like, pick their inch. Um, so they're not real. Deep, because we have our, you know, uplighting, and we don't want too much shadow thrown up with the face of the wall. That line is still painted. I'm sorry. Yeah, and then that's hand, right, and then the line work around it is is hand painted.
So to me, the contra, you know, the contrast between the lighter and the dark, to me, would read better, going to the dark. You know, more of a.
So this kind of, I couldn't get it to print right, it looks like it's gray, but it is dark, but that, the line work that goes around the uh the south.
I'm just, I'm just gonna speak for where I stand, with the else trying to. For the building itself, that color, I like what was already approved. This as of right now, approved. I'm not opposed to the the changes in the front, like the green.
Mm-hmm.
The base, what you're doing there.
Yeah.
Um, but to make the building. Color with that signage, first off, not. Being consistent with any of the character in the village as we see it today. I'm not in favor of, I'm, you know, I like what I'm seeing there on that page in general. And that's kind of. From my eyes, what we approved before.
Yes, I, yeah.
And what?
I mean, I agree with you, I would be, I'd be in favor of allowing a color shift under the windows to put that pop of color there. Um, but I think for the body of the building to respect. The building as a whole. I think that putting a distinct color that's very different than the rest goes against what we asked for initially.
Yes, I think. I think. You get a little bit of. I don't know whether it's eye tiredness, but. I think the. My first reaction to the mustard seed was that it, it's very free. And um. I like the, I guess, the more toned down colors and. And I still think that the original thing that we that we improved. I like the best.
They're just trying to identify their own area, you know. As far as their restaurant, they just want to be able to identify it when people drive in.
But it's the front.
They don't.
It's got cool lights on it, that's. What I think could be some cool signage, I think there's a lot about it that does pop. And I understand that what we had approved before.
And I understand that what we had approved before, I feel kind of fits within the village, and that looks good. I can't, nobody else feel otherwise, I'm open to.
I agree.
Basically, my eye is broadly going down, and that would more.
Yeah.
Yes, for reasons beyond the color, more to do with the village consistency.
And the the building that feeling like. Once I'll go.
I just wanna make, I just wanna.
It's nice, warm. The uh, while he's doing that, the dark bronze, the shield of age, you can see now.
Yeah. Question two about the lighting in the back corner, we talked about the glare right now, not the fixture, but. The um, strip lighting, did you confirm whether or not that? That one piece that you had, you have in the detail is or is not on that? Why, why is that glaring at night toward the neighborhood underneath the overhang?
The the linear light that's behind the fascia?
Yeah, did you confirm that whatever you thought was gonna break that lighting?
There were dimmers.
It's not the dimness though.
I know, we gotta, we gotta put a shield, there's a lot of little things we gotta do. That we might even have to put a, uh, some kind of a band on the glass to stop. But you you've seen it reflective off of the light. But there might be a way just getting rid of that reflecting light you see in the glass.
We actually see the light source from the back, you can see.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
You can see it, you go to. But you showed us in this detail that's in here, that there's a little piece you added when Scott brought this up in the beginning.
Yeah.
See this little thing right here? You had, so next one, right? You had added that little.
Is it shield or type of shield?
Where is it? The lens here. There it is, you actually had a linear, tiniers, there's the channel. You added a little piece of that.
Yeah, there's a.
This might not be the most recent.
There's a lens, a a linear lens that snaps on the front of that.
Okay, so you, but my point, I was asking, did you confirm it's not there?
It's not there.
So that's why it's not working?
Yeah.
Okay, because I couldn't tell if it was like a glare lens or.
No, it's it's just the the bare dials right now.
Okay. Right?
That's a work in progress, but you know, something new that they didn't really test out as much as they should have.
There are no lights still under there on the new awning you're gonna put up, there's no lights underneath that, those are just sconces.
Just the sconces, and then there's, under the windows are like little path lights, those little rectangular path lights that'll shine just like down onto the sidewalk as you walk by. And the, you know, the little bit of landscaping, it's in front. But we're the new, I wanna call it an awning, because there are awnings with the new material that's going up top. Do you have any lights above that in any way?
Where?
About that that shines down?
Which ones?
Let's.
The canvas.
Over the uh, the dining room. There's, there's no lighting, I just can't remember off the top of my head, though even the upper one, no, okay, so there's no.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, there's no, there's no lighting up there.
We had. Got to the ground lighting on the face.
At one point we did, and then we added those, those um, awnings underneath, the canvas awnings underneath, and it kind of. So there was no point in having them.
Okay.
Yeah, there were lights that weren't there.
All right. The other comments?
Yeah, I just wanna go back, just give a little bit more detail on what the roof actually is going to be, I understand that you you mentioned earlier that. Um, it won't support the weight doing it, but could you just go into a little bit more detail on that?
Yeah, so the, there's a, currently is an aluminum frame. You know, that you would have if you were to lock by a storefront, you looked up over there stretched on, and you'll see like a one inch by one inch silver. You know, aluminum frame, and that's essentially what's up there now. And so it's 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 not heavy duty enough to be able to attach um, standing seam metal roof panels to, like what's up on the tower now. Um, and the added strapping, we'd have to add extra, you know, um, burring strips perpendicular to kind of carry that, uh, those pieces. So all that extra weight is too much for that frame that's there now.
So so it's only the aluminum, the awning part, the roof itself is still going to have the um, the metal roofing? Or no, I mean, I, did I miss that?
Up here will be that metal roofing.
Okay.
That's up on the tower, but then over the dining room.
That's also.
That's all going to be this, um, the new stretched um, canvas, if you will.
So that's also the tube part that you're talking about?
This is, this is all that we're talking about. Yeah, this is all the structure.
I'm sorry, I I wasn't sure if you meant like the actual awning and then the above part of this. Okay, so both parts are essentially just tube construction.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that wasn't quite clear for me, thank you. That means that those two roofs are gonna be different.
They'll be just like they are today, so the only difference is it'll be a, it'll be the same color now as the upper roof, as the metal roof on the tower. So, so it'll look the same.
Some color. Will the um, will the tower have stripes, but the lower won't, the lower will just be.
Standing seam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your technical care.
It's got a package of samples.
It's got everything.
Any other thoughts?
Just a question, because it it wasn't noticed as site plan update, is it okay to do? A site plan, because these are added site plan modifications. It is okay, so you can do a site plan review and personal plan modification and then assign. So what's the site and amendment? Want to be, what we, you wanted, are you at the point through each one?
Here's what I have, I have.
Are you making a motion?
Oh yeah, I'm making sure we have it all together.
Okay.
The upper currently ribbed section of the roof, to me, be smooth dark bronze, plan S P three reference one. H V A C shielding to dark bronze as noted. Change to, let's see, two green sections under the window, which are S W four nine. Six four one nine and seven oh two zero. Lens, I just want to reference that lens still to be installed in the lighting that is under the. Let's call it the plaza canopy. And no change to the restaurant building stucco itself. Since the initial approvals, that's what I have, that's all it is.
I love it, the shield on the light fixture that's lighting the parking lot is noted on this plan. And the window film is also noted on this plan, that is to be a light. Uh, gray, like warm gray, and the aluminum is painted to look like the bronze. I'm gonna make you repeat using a motion, you know, that right? Okay, that could write it all down. And you got the equipment screen, right? Those are all the ones that Jim highlighted.
It's a shield, yeah. Anything else?
What about the color? You had it in there.
Yeah. What were, what were indications of a change as to that? And not that building. Anything else we need to add? All right, I'll make a motion. Yes, this is one of your piecemeals, so hold on. Make a motion to make a site plan amendment. To include the following, the restaurant upper ribbed roof. To be changed with smooth dark bronze per plan S P three reference one. And I'm calling that out, yeah, because I'm not saying everything on that plan, as I'm just saying in reference to that item. H V C shielding approved to dark bronze as noted.
Same sheet.
Is that on the same sheet?
Yes.
No, that's. Same sheet S P three. Yeah, same sheet, same planning. Um, let's see, change the two. Green sections as presented under the windows. To S W six four one nine and S W seven oh two oh. For that same plan. No other changes to building colors are approved in this. Lens, I'm just referencing lens to still be installed under the plaza canopy. Light fixture in the parking lot. To have a shield installed, anything else to reference to that side of the.
On the building.
The parking lot lighting on the building. Have a shield installed, and then on the back of the plaza. What is currently seen as mirrored glass covered with a film, a mirror film possibly. Will be covered with a light gray film. Over the entire section that is mirrored currently with dark bronze aluminum.
I guess it's paint.
Paint.
Until, was in the original resolution, it said until those tenants.
Continuing with the original resolution until that tenant turns over, at which time that will be swapped out. Wait a second.
Second.
John, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You opposed? Okay. Harry, you have all that? Worthless recording. Okay. Thank you. I thought that one, I mean, you're glad, welcome to take this, it makes a lot of noise, you're welcome to take it. All right, now now signage.
This will prove the signs, it's this one, not that one.
Uh, I think.
I'm gonna say yes, because that is in my packet in front of the, so yeah, don't look at that. This was submitted with the signed package.
Is that right? Is that right, Jim, that we have different signage they've seen on them, which is the one you're asking for, does she?
Well, this is just a, a.
The whole thing, like if you look, they're not, uh, some of the renderings are not the same. So I wasn't sure, I think what we have there.
Well, dis- disregard, that's just colors, so look at that, it's only colors, so this with this packet here is the, is the color.
Gotcha.
Yeah, or I'm sorry, the signage, but yeah, so those are just kind of technical drawings of each of the signs. And then elevation drawings showing it in relation to the building elements, and then a rendering just to give you kind of a sense.
Okay. That's out, thank you.
So, so I'm referencing Mike's comments here, Mike put together a summary for us, that for each individual sign. What's the variance? I noticed some of. Four years E B A application, not all of it was filled out, not necessarily for us, just advising. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go through those questions, yeah, yeah. I mean, you've seen this obviously a few times.
Those questions are, that it's expected to be filled out, so the board application, that just gives them a reference, like what's going to be. Your new budget.
Okay.
Criteria, just, yes, just so you know, using the five criteria questions.
Prepared to answer those.
Yeah, any information you provide is obviously helpful to the zoning board when they look at the.
Yeah.
So speaking of the sign.
Sign A.
So again, we just had some of this discussed, but the, the square going around it is painted. The. Letters to include a pizza, those are all cut out.
Right. One inch thick.
One inch thick. And there's lighting beneath it in that strip, not anywhere else in that area. Yeah, that's the existing, that's the lighting that been approved, but the original plaza lighting.
What was above, saying metallic, did they?
No, it's um, it's, so this is kind of the awning that overhangs the. So it's a, a linear.
Shining up.
Yeah, so it's just a linear fixture that shines off, like essentially like an L E D strip.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just reflected off that.
Aluminum, you know, case or or frame, a little angle on it.
Okay.
All right.
And it's the same as what's down the whole side of the plaza that's lighting all the other signs too.
That's good.
Okay.
Do you wanna go through just? Thank you.
Yeah. On a, posed to two foot seven inches. That is from the top of the A to the bottom of the stripe. Two feet is permitted. If if I were to. Far to look at the top of the T, for example. The top of that T to the top of the A. Like what is, if I'm looking at the. Make it fat off of the spilling. Element, elementary.
Elementary.
Elementary, I'm sorry. Far to look at that, what is the maximum height of those letters, just about? Like the, um. One foot eight, one inches, yeah.
There's a dimension here, look, Scott, um, if you look at this one, one foot eight.
Right, yes, because, because. I guess this one's not that squiggly, but. The line and this cable.
Thoughts on sign A?
To me, because of the scale of the tower, I would, if I were them, I would consider going for variance for this, because I think if it gets much smaller. It doesn't really complement the scale of the building, I mean, I know their signage is greater all the way around and all the faces, but I think. This building is suited to it. In some cases, you know, we've seen buildings that are not, because they didn't have as much side, but. It doesn't, doesn't bother me at all, I think it, they got small.
Yeah, the things that get very, those, our case liners are very small.
Yeah, they're pretty small to begin with. I keep it.
I have a couple, I just want to, like a couple things, so the paint, can I, can I? Okay, so I just wanna make sure that this, these details are actually gonna be in there, so I see like the square. But then it has like a little circle cut out of it, I don't know if there's a more fancy term, and then like a bow tie.
It took, took pinstriping on a car, you know, and it's all hand painted.
Alright, so the little bow ties are in fact going to show up in the corners, right?
Yes.
Like that's not, that's not like a printer.
No, no, that'll definitely be, that's kind of part of the 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 style and the, the the look.
Okay. Alright, and then.
I wouldn't say that's signage, to me, that's a detail in the building. Even though it's dimensioned as part of the sign, because it's not, it's painted.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some context and, you know, how things were kind of scaling all together.
I mean, it's, it's, I I noticed it because it appears on this one and then this one, and it also appears on, yeah, in the. I guess sign A, B and C to make the. Yeah, I like it, I just wanna make sure the details actually gonna show up, it's not, you know, it's going to have the little bow ties there, and then like it's made, it's just gonna be a square or something. Because that sort of ties into the whole concept format, I just kind of had that idea. And then, um, so, so the specials, speciality, speciality, specials, are these ever gonna change?
I think it's a, it's just, um, food groups, if you will, you know, it's not necessarily specifically a dish, you know, that may change from week to week. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a, whether it's salami, or you know, it's just the things that they specialize in. But at a higher level, it's referencing just what the menu is, but this is not meant to be swapped out on a regular basis. But the record show Paul is saying no. You're not the chef.
That's right, you're right, right. Alright, so so this is gonna be the sign, more likely not for, until there's another sign change. Alright, so so this is gonna be the sign, more likely not for, until there's another sign change.
We'll be back with them.
Is that a painted sign? And or what?
It'll be a printed and then, you know, many or two a back or. Back panel.
They add that a window, they could add that. Twenty five percent of a window. The same kind like on that, on that brick wall, I think it.
That's great.
Yeah, I think it's, this lettering size makes sense for, as people are moving through that parking lot, some some interview from the road.
No, but as they walk up. Yeah, it's not a money, yes.
I mean, I. I'm, I'm, I have no problem with the front sign, I kinda have mixed feelings on the, on the smaller sign, I don't. The understanding in the sense of. Does it need to be? Does it need to be larger if it's not actually doing anything?
Which one, the black?
I'm sorry, sign C.
Sign C.
I mean, for me, again, it's scaled to that panel on the building, so if it got smaller, you can see it in relationship to. The the fascia. Of that dark bronze that runs across. You know, if it was smaller, it would be pretty small.
We we did try, we did a couple of different tests on it, bigger and smaller, and when you get smaller, the letters start to. You know, cause they're already kind of condensed, and they get to, you know, and they're not legible. Unless you stop and look at it.
You know, so, oh, it's because it's six foot. And you only can use two, but to be honest with you, I'm kind of not really, I'm gonna be honest, I'm just not the biggest fan of it. I don't want, I just don't, I I worry, well, I guess it's gonna need a variance anyway, but I worry that it's going to. Start a new trend of. Of having. It's like the larger sign, like this one obviously makes sense, there's an easy explanation and justification for it, but I'm worried that it just might start a new trend for everybody else who wants to have a. A much larger sign for. Like, and it's not really doing anything.
Yeah, really decorative, right, because it's not selling something, it's not sa- selling the name. It's really part of the architecture or artistry, as Mike points out, like a piece of art. And I think if other people did, it wouldn't bother me, as long as they're not saying buy this product, right, that's the whole idea of signage, or not being. So big that it becomes garish or end be lighter. I mean, this isn't gonna be, this is gonna have the same lighting feature.
It'll have, yeah, there's a point recess, like it kind of comes down, it's gonna kind of spot on it.
From above or below?
From above, yeah.
So why this one above and not the other one?
Well, there's a recess like there now, that was already part of the plaza, cause we knew something was gonna. Eventually happen, or if not, then we would still wanna feature that brick there, cause it is, you know.
So do you think though, that the other sign is gonna be visible on the front without the downlight?
Yeah, no, I think that's.
It's fine.
There's no opportunity other, you know, to like that sign, that vertical sign.
No, I was talking about this one, this is the one I thought, John, you're talking about this one, right?
I'm talking about sign C. Oh, no, this one. Yeah, no, this one, this one, this one, I know I have a problem with it, I have, I have a problem with this one, this actually, it looks like almost bigger than this one. I I I'm sorry, I'm saying this one, this one, sign C being the black and gold is the. Two, two guys, because, because I'm not saying the words, two, two in Jorno, in Jorno? Uh, close enough, okay, um, I don't have to ask much for a problem with this. That one, I have a problem with the specialities, the specials, because it's almost bigger than the sign that's on the tower. But I'm just not understanding why.
So that's what, Jim, you're saying there's a light here, but there, this one is lit.
Yeah, it's the same, right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Cause I would want the two sides and look this.
That's right.
Gotcha, yeah.
I mean, I.
Actually, it is bigger than I, than I'm looking at the dimension by almost twice as much. Three foot eight, very good six feet.
The largest letter on that sign is only four and a half inches tall, so that's the largest letter. You know, and then they get smaller too, depending on how they're being depicted, I feel like because of that brick.
All the panel where it is and the scale of the restaurant. Reference to that sign or. Really, anything I'm seeing on that, I don't have an issue with it, because of the scale of the whole place and that wall is. It fits to me.
And it fits as. As a decoration. It's in a Italian restaurant.
But it's not saying today's specials are. That is a going to be nice inside.
But at the end of the day, again, it's not up to us, it's up to Z B A, but you should give them our comments.
Good point.
But I do think. I feel the same way that it's more of a decorative. Sign and it provides a detail that is of a level of a village like ours, you know, there's. You'll find in older buildings. Plax and, you know, different kinds of emblems that. Signified something, even in the building and in the architecture, so to me, that's adding a level of detail or richness to the building. That I appreciate, and I wouldn't mind if others did the same.
Alright, here's the real test, Jim. What does sign? B say?
All day long.
What does sign B say? Okay.
How do you pronounce it? Uh, it is tutu is Jorno, right?
It says all day long.
It's, yeah, it translates a couple of different ways. Unless you guys wanna. Yeah.
That sign complies as it is, I have no issue with that sign.
I have a question, only because we did the tour and there's a bakery and a restaurant, are they separate? In name, or are they?
Yes, so on that left, back that we're discussing. Canitaria is one of the words, that translates to bakery.
Okay.
And then you'll see Salumaria, which is going to be the deli area, so like you were saying, they're not specific items.
Yes.
It's kind of describing the different areas in the restaurant.
So so the sign actually does do something.
But the sign, yeah, so the sign though. On the building for the building name or business name that is the whole complex. Gotcha, and it does, you're right, that's a great point that you brought that up, because that makes that sign even more necessary.
Can I actually ask, can we go through what, what are the different things on here?
Sure.
Because I'm not, I'm not gonna try to pronounce them, if anybody knows. If I wanna, anybody need a copy out? I I don't, I I can tell I don't see gelato on it.
So, um, the first one, Trattoria, that's the restaurant in the evening. Roma Pizza is the pizza we'll be showcasing there, it's um. More like a facassia style, it's baked in a blue steel pan, very crispy, very light. Canitaria is the bakery, espresso is our coffee espresso. Salumaria is where you can buy cheeses and different meats. Panini translates to sandwiches. Ferrocchio cheese, Mercato is market. An otecca. Wine bar, biara is beer, and aperitivo is basically a happy hour.
So it's not just. I I don't know, I mean, everybody else liked it for decoration, I like the technique, something, and it does something, so.
Alright. So in reference to the sign package.
It would be type, type two under secret.
Making your reference, this will be a type two under seeker, the type.
Option to recommend the sign package as submitted with a positive recommendation.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any votes? Thank you for going through that list. That made us all very hungry, we are going to go home and eat whatever is in our pantry. Nothing to do with anything you just raffled off, thank you. Thank you. Two thirty nine Salt Springs.
My assumption is everybody has drawings or whatever, maybe. See, that's a wrong assumption. So, um. So I'd like to start, um, really with the site plan. I don't know how best to show this, but. I'll just kind of go around, so that's the existing, um, circa eighteen seventy five house. And that's, uh, me just standing. This is an existing, uh, like. Uh, sort of porch, uh, three sway. And, um. So basically, what I like, the right, the right hand side of my house, I've always felt was really ugly, and so. I then I've done a new addition to the back of the house. And I. I embellished the front, so on the. Left hand side. So now what I wanted to do was kind of fix the right hand side and balance everything out. Tie everything together. And also what it will do is create like a screen wall, because I have two air conditioning condensing units. Which really just. They're out there, and so what I wanna do is screen that. I've used what's called versetta stone. For like the stonework on the house, and so what I wanna do is create like a stone, a versetta stone wall as a screen wall. And then have like a deck behind that that ties in to the, the second entrance here at that level. So, um, so my, my plan is then you walk out the door. And then you take a hard left and you walk out on the deck and then you have, you know, you're kind of, I can show you. This is a real quick sketch, but this would. No, this is, this, I didn't submit this. So is that okay?
You did the sketches, like, was it you?
I did, okay, I did, yeah, cause I'm always doing that, so. So this is what you would see from the street, there's an existing sidewalk there now. And there's an existing driveway that's there now. So I would come, I would basically come right off of that. And then that's where the air conditioning units are, and that's what I'd be hiding. I'm sorry, I'm not showing, and then I, I did another sketch. Where, which I think we got. Um, Karen asked me to do this, so this is. This is the original corner of the house, I cut it off, because I didn't think you really needed to see that, this is the porch. And then, so this would be the screen wall, and then I wanna do some landscaping here as a way to lead in. And like I said, this is the existing stone sidewalk that comes down like this. There's a fence here and there's a, um, beautiful tree right here. And so, like I said, this would be the versetta stone, which, um, is. Echoing what's happening on the other side of the house. So. So basically, and then. It's like, I'm sorry, I'm not telling everybody here. Oh, okay, alright. But. So when you, like I said, so right now, this part right here is already there, and it's, it's a tracks deck. I I replaced it, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Just trying to be of help.
Yes, there we go. Hey, thank you. So anyway, so this, this, this deck was really falling apart. And, uh, replaced it with a new tracks, new structure and tracks deck, so I would just continue that. When you walk out the door, you're at the same level, there are no stairs, no railings. And then this screen wall is just this side of the existing sidewalk. And then. Then the other lead in sidewalk, so. I. Knew that I was okay on the side yard setback, and I thought because. This, because the face of that wall is. Is four feet behind the face of my house, my existing house. That I was okay. Alright, and then when I s- I submitted like a pretty detailed set of drawings to Mike and. Mike said, well, that the front yard setback's thirty feet. And it doesn't matter that you're behind the front of your house. So that's why I'm here, um. You know, I'm. Like, that, that's why I'm here, okay, um. I thought I was compliant and, uh, I'm not.
You haven't started any construction though at this moment.
I I think. If you look at my house and you look at the right hand side, it just, it, it needs help. It's just.
Problem with a variances, there has to be a need, right, there. Typically, there's a reason why they're going, especially into a front yard setback, because that's of a, you know. Public view, so to me, you have so much land on this property outside of that area, just to have a deck or a sitting area. Doesn't, it's really not necessary to impede our zoning regulations. Therefore, if you're really looking to hide something, because it did say an application was to screen, I mean, there's other ways to do it that would not. Come into that thirty foot setback, so I'm not inclined to make a positive recommendation, because. It, to me, it seems like there are other ways to accomplish what you wanna do without having to go against our zoning. And I think it's important in the front yard, and it is, despite the fact that there's a more modern addition, the house itself is an older home that. Has the char- village character. Still, and to carry something forward of it or very close to the front of it. To me, it seems, um, that variances should be used for. Some of the conditions we've seen in the, in the near, you know, near past that we've been working on that, were really because they couldn't do it any other way. It was justified, cause I think if you went through the five criteria, I think it's very hard to justify that having a deck. In the front yard.
When you get to that. That next step being the zoning board, they're gonna go through criteria. And there's a few of them you're gonna have a challenge getting through, but the biggest one is the term need. It's, I'm sorry, the term need. Was this need self imposed, is one of those, that's a, that's a question they're going to ask.
Okay.
So that. I mean, I'll let you answer that question, is the need self imposed before you, before you get there? I have a hard time justifying that one. I I agree, I think there's other ways and and. Other ways. First off, you know, your home, like the, I live in an old home as well, and I love that you take such good care of that structure. That original old structure. Anything that is out towards the road, I'd want to match that, not necessarily a more modern something, I think there's. Ways to do that that are within code. That involve shielding and maybe achieving some of what you're trying to do.
So this started out with you just wanting to shield the view of the air conditioners.
Yes, primarily that and, um. I I would say that was the the biggest thing is just that. I feel that the right hand side of the house is less attractive, and I wanted to improve. I I wanted to pull everything together that I've done. So that the left and the right, they balance each other. The wall doesn't touch the house. My concept from the very beginning was I have an eighteen seventy five old farmhouse. And I did not wanna, my addition that I did, I did not wanna have like eighteen seventy five farmhouse times two. So my intention was always to do something very stark contrast. And that. Because of the contrast, you see the eighteen seventy five farmhouse, cause it's a black on white. And that's always been my concept, so. I've, on the left hand side, I wanted, you know, basically to. I've, on the left hand side, I wanted, you know, basically to, to pull everything together. So let me ask this question. If. If the deck is the issue, I can do a patio. Um, that's legal, but I would still want to do the screen wall. Be, you know what I mean to, as, as a visual barrier from the ugliness that's there. Um, it's more of a, that's. Okay, so I could do that, but the reason I wanted to, I mean, so, okay, instead of having a concrete slab patio or, or paver patio. Now I've got to get from the door level down to the patio, which I just thought, what's the difference? You're not gonna see the deck. Cuz the, 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 the screen wall is gonna be there, you're not gonna see the deck.
It's a structure.
Whether it's.
It's a structure within the front setback, the walls, you're, the way you're showing them here. You could put them behind, you could put that wall in a very small area behind thirty foot, but my understanding is you can't have any structure in that. Right away, right? I mean, so you're, you, you think that paver is a patio, though, is allowed in the front yard.
Hey, the landscape, but the paper is concrete.
Right, but you can't, you can't have a, you can't build a structure without a variance. And having a variance within the front setback for a structure is a difficult thing to get. I mean.
Well, it's not past the existing structure that's there, but still it's not.
Very close to the road.
Current zoning.
That's right. So I mean, I think those are the choices. If you're gonna do anything, you have to do it behind the thirty foot line. Or you have to do it in a different way that doesn't require retaining walls.
It's not a retaining.
Well, a solid wall, I guess I should say a structure.
But I'm, but I'm allowed to do that wall. It's, the only issue is the deck. I can do patio.
So, so are you saying this is not the wall and the way it's, this is drawn, I assume that this was a wall?
No, 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 no. This is the wall right there.
Well, that's within the thirty foot.
Yes, I know.
So you can't build that without a variance?
No, I can.
With a. With a.
Own wall.
How, but the front can only be what? How high in the front yard though?
Um, you can't add one of the front. If it passes the front of building, it's gonna be four feet. You can have six foot running parallel with the, with the house.
Perpendicular to the house?
Yeah, that's nine or six.
And it's. It, it's not sticking out in front of the house.
Yeah, it looks like a setback, so you, you could put a wall there.
It's setback four feet. I measured it. And there's an existing sidewalk there. So the, the, the wall would be behind the sidewalk, behind, four feet behind the front of the house now.
So what is it? What's the structure made of? Is it, is it, does it have a foundation or are they posts?
Just be posts.
Posts with this material you're using on top of it?
Yeah, I'll, like I said, so the existing porch right now. Has trex decking on it. And it would just continue. I would, at the same level.
I say.
But this is very difficult. Play it as one thing, but it's really not, it's a small thing.
So this is, this is the existing porch right now. And that's the door. So you come out here. This is existing right now at that elevation.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the framing, but you would come out here and.
So are you proposing just making the deck smaller enough? Because the deck needs a variance too. Deck is.
With paper.
Posts.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, I think, I think he thought, are you talking about the original deck or the proposed deck?
Well, the proposed deck.
The deck and there's a screen wall is my understanding. Can I see some of those drawings?
I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I bet it.
What's the perspective to where the accent?
Look this.
We got a top one. There.
Oh, this.
So, so right now, how this right here is the existing trap. So I wanted to bring it at the same level.
This is a wall.
And then this would be tracks, but this, this, whether I do a patio, it would be, this would be down.
Where's the triangle? I know that there's a triangle back, it's a back triangle.
It's, yeah, way back, it's way back, yeah.
This is.
Yeah, and she was, right in here would be the area where the condenser is. You wouldn't see them anymore. But yeah, I would still be able to service.
This is coming actually way.
No, no, this is four back, back, yeah, 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 but.
No, but the air.
No, they're here. They're behind us while, they're behind.
Yeah, so this is, I understand what she's saying. This I.
Those are. Portions are.
Yeah, yeah, but this is, so your air conditioner condensers are actually.
They're way back here and the whole reason for this would be to hide.
Triangles are like.
They're way back.
Even further back. Okay, all right, I got it.
All right, and so. This is, that's what it would kind of, a little different, but you get an idea.
Also, I don't think it's here.
All right. Of what it would look like, so, well.
It's one thing.
Kind of like that angle.
There in the upper right, that's the AC. Yeah, there's the condensers, two of them actually.
I saw that on pictures.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, oh, so this is like from the street, but this way.
Yeah, and this is the existing sidewalk, existing sidewalk that goes to a couple steps. And then this is the existing porch.
Wait, so, so this is also gonna be decking?
This would, that is what I'm proposing.
Oh, the decking going basically right up to the sidewalk?
No, 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 right up to the wall here.
And then the wall is basically on the sidewalk.
Yeah, the wall, here's the existing sidewalk and then the driveway out here.
Oh, how much space between a sidewalk, is it like, is it flush?
It's like almost tight.
It's coming up.
Right to it.
Yeah, that's pretty. Is this something or is this something else? Was it, was this something or is this something?
That's sort of. Yeah, I just happened to.
Just one last question. What are the, here, there, all involved, and there, what are these?
There's, I, there wanna be lights. You know, just, I don't have to have the lights there if that's a problem, but uh, I thought it would be nice that you're. But when you come out of the driveway, you walk along that sidewalk and then you take a hard right to your front door.
It's a just divine glance.
So how? Okay, because when I look at the photo, it doesn't look like it's a lot of space, but how big is the, the deck area?
It's like about ten feet wide, cuz I'm, I have to be, I have my side yard setback. And then it's about twenty, a little over twenty feet long.
Going back to existing from the front back.
Back to where the air conditioning.
And so I think it's ten, ten feet from here.
Wide, yeah.
And. Well, do we even care about that? Or what, what is the distance between the front to your existing deck? Where, you know, your, your stairs here? Stairs here.
Yeah.
On the front to here, following that.
I'm not sure. It's not real, it's not real long. The house is very close to the street.
It is.
You know. They were able, they were able to build.
And back in the day.
And that, and that was why I held, I really didn't think it'd be an issue because I had the wall behind where my, front of my house is.
How is that possible with this, this is four feet back from the house, but the sidewalk's running right here? Is that, is that, it is not the street sidewalk?
The house is sided. Not par- parallel to the road.
Yeah, but that doesn't make, that's sort of the side, the public sidewalk runs like.
No, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not public sidewalk.
So what am I looking at? Okay, so what is this sidewalk?
That's just, that's personal.
Is there an existing sidewalk?
It's on your, it's on your lawn.
Yeah.
It's an existing sidewalk.
It's existing. It's there now.
Sidewalk is not the front of the, okay, nevermind.
No, it's not.
Yeah, this is, this is.
That's not the public sidewalk.
Right. The public sidewalk is here. I didn't show that.
Yeah, I was, I was sort of, I got, I got reconfused because I was, when you said that this was going to the sidewalk, I'm like, how is the sidewalk all the way back there? Okay. So. So you, so this, the sidewalk doesn't even need to exist, it just so happens to exist, but it's not, it's not the street sidewalk.
Yeah, so I, yeah, the street sidewalk's not, this is the driveway and this is the existing sidewalk right now. That exists, that's there.
All right. Um, all right, now hang on, wait. So this is. This is, where is the house? Where's the house?
So this is, this is the house and this is like um, right here.
Okay, and.
That's just an elevation.
Uh, what orientation is this worth?
So here's, here's the porch, existing. This, this exists. These are the two condensing units.
Seeing the entire house, John. Yeah, I'm starting to get that, but I, what I've. Look at the orientation, look at where the AC units are, right there, so, okay.
That's where, that's.
Oh, so the, there's, so the, the, the actual sidewalk's over there?
Yes.
Okay, so what is this? This is just, just your own personal sets?
Exactly.
And then there's a.
The sidewalk goes, and you're right, it goes in an angle.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right, all right, I got it. All right, I think I got it. Sorry, maybe I'm the one who's confused, sorry.
No.
All right.
No, anybody else just like.
All right. Okay. Um.
A little bit.
Say, we're confused most days. So, and then I think the question that you asked earlier was where exactly along the house is the, the thirty foot line?
Well, now we know this, it's about middle of what's proposed here as of.
There, that's, as this floor.
You, you can see it clearly on that site, yeah, right there.
Which one?
So, right there's the now thirty foot setback.
Okay, so.
And there's, that's the front of the house, right?
Right, if I. Well, I don't see try to orient.
Try to pour light.
The same way, so it would be this way.
Exactly.
And then that would be the AC units are over here, so is, is it gonna be a.
So this, this line.
It's gonna be hereish.
About right there.
Okay.
Okay.
I got it.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, all right, that help everybody else or am I the only one who's benefiting? If not, I'll prove to be my own benefit.
No, I got it.
Uh, understanding.
Okay.
I, I feel like I do understand it. Smile, put it out for everybody else.
But in the area.
It's not consistent with village character that in that neighborhood having porch. You know, we're at the front of the property and I think it's a slippery slope opening this to a variance. Considering the character issue on that property, that's, that's where I stand, so I'm, I'm a.
So you don't think that stone wall is part of the character?
Village, not, not with the.
Right, just.
The trapezoid, but.
Right.
Well, so, but also the, that coming towards the front or calling it a front patio. Is generally not consistent with, if you go into the, the, look at the homes in this area. Generally not consistent.
If you were to go down the street and look at the fronts of all the homes from one end to the other. They don't have living spaces up against the front corner of their house. It's usually a driveway or lawn. So, you know, when you look through the area variance questions, for me, that's how I do it, you know, is there an undesirable change in character of the neighborhood? Yeah, because it's not, it's no longer consistent. We're allowing someone to use their front yard in a way. Inside the setback that no one else can unless they're for variance. Um, you know, and you just kind of click through them. Can you achieve this benefit by some other method feasible? Yes, again.
But that's the patio, patio alternative.
Put it somewhere else, or if it's screening the air conditioning unit, put plants there, put another wa- wall or a variety of some other kind.
I mean, like, what's the, so we have two different.
So this doesn't need to be. This part, close to the front.
That's right, for the, if you're just. Because there's the AC units right there.
Yeah, but what are, what are we arguing about? Is it because? What is, what is?
I think it's just, it's an elevation.
Yeah.
If I have a patio, I can do a patio.
No, I'm not, I'm not, okay. I want to focus in on what the, what the area, area of contention is, because if, if according to Mike, that. He can still have the trapezoid wall and the trapezoid wall here and trapezoid wall there, none of those would require anything. Then the only issue is, can he put a deck there? So that's the only, so.
That's what I'm talking about. Look, space where you can.
Cuz I mean, I have, I have my own design thoughts about the trapezoidal wall, but if it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, so.
The variance is actually for the deck, according to Mike, so that's what I'm speaking about, is just the deck.
Could I just make a comment? I mean, people have front torches. Up and down the street, I'll take pictures. I'll show you there. Houses.
Right across the street from them, looking on the street.
Right across the street, yeah, front porch, all surround. So it goes across the front and it goes down the side.
Is it within the setback?
Yeah, I mean, probably, yes, it probably.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that we're disagreeing with you having a deck there. Is it in the setback or not?
I understand, but what, what I'm arguing is I, my house is four feet in front of where I want to put this, I mean. But the, the setback is the setback is the setback. And, and that part of it doesn't matter, doesn't, doesn't change. We're here to discuss. Whether or not we would recommend approving this to the ZBA because we cannot approve it. Because it's against our code. We'd be recommending, I. I'm not in favor of recommending this to them. Part of it is going through those answers.
Historical or doesn't? No, it's not.
It's not historical despite being over forty years old.
It's before you simply because it's a recommendation under variance with the deck.
And is the biggest issue, the code, the setback, because you're, regardless of the house, the issue. Is not where it's located, it's that you're encroaching on this, well, you're in the thirty foot setback.
Correct.
That's the main issue.
Yes, so I mean, the deck could be built behind the thirty foot setback without, without just.
The house is a legal, nonconforming structure. This doesn't meet today's zoning. It did back in eighteen hundreds.
And built a same house today.
Instead, expanding that nonconformity. Which is what you're, you're saying we're not in favor of, we filled it behind the thirty foot line.
And, I mean, initially, the, the reason for the project to begin with was to screen the AC units.
That's what I read.
Which, which can be accomplished.
Accomplished.
Without the deck anyway, but. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. Yeah, it, it, cuz my, my thought process in my head is remove the things that, that he could do anyway. Can you just build a deck there? Like, imagine the triangles, the, the trapezoids weren't there. But, you know, but he just have that deck. I imagine that I would be neutral on it at the very least. Because people like to build decks in areas where they can't, you know, I think we approved it just.
But it was in the rear yard.
It was the rear yard.
Right, and the one, you know, it was too close to the, to the, to the wall or to the property line.
I, I'm neutral at the very least. The trapezoid is, is, is not my, not my favorite, I'm gonna be honest, it's not my favorite style, but you know, it's your house, so you do you. But.
But let's just go around, Chris, where do you stand?
Um. It's not a personal opinion, my personal opinion, it doesn't bother me, but I think Dan said it very well. We don't have the ability to approve, we, it's against the code. Um, it's pretty cut dry.
Can I guess?
Tell him not at home.
Uh, it's, it's, I guess the question is, are we recommending it positive, negative, or neutral, right? To the um, to the, to the zoning, for variance. To the zoning board.
That's what we're doing, is recommending it.
And I believe I heard negatives, I'm neutral.
I would, I will say, I would say neutral, though.
Yeah.
You're not gonna actually see the deck from the street, correct?
Um, hundred percent correct, you will not see it, I guarantee it.
Well, you probably.
What's the whole reason for doing it? Wants to hide it.
Probably can see some of it, you know, you probably won't be able to see most of it because of the stone wall, but you probably could see like the tail end of it. I mean, it is gonna be a deck, what's, what's the material? I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, interrupt. What's the material of the deck that we already talked about?
It's like, just think of like your typical deck, oh, you know track? The same color that's there now, which is kind of a, uh, like a. I don't know, what color is, uh.
And I am now.
It's a light. Very light.
I know, I know, but like to the extent that, to the extent that it's going to be, you know, something like, you know. Even even more, more of a concern, you know, if it's.
The only reason I wanted to do the deck was so that when you came out the door. You were at the same level, I wanted to avoid having stairs and railings going down to a patio, so I thought. Just bring that, instead of having a patio down here, bring that elevation up and the screen wall still hides everything. So.
I don't have a problem with this.
Karen seemed to have a. What is the traditional or Ted, what is the? Process for this?
Yeah, you're pretty much just try to let the board of the be able to appreciate the fact that. There was quite a discussion, you know, there's difference of opinion.
What are we submitting as?
So you could submit no recommendation, uh, or negative or positive.
We do three negatives, two, two neutral, three neutrals.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
But we have form, it's just a matter of, uh, I just don't know if the neutrals would be taken into account or not.
So scared.
I'll give this a shot, this is a vote.
Between.
That's what we got.
It's just a matter of, you know, will will the neutral votes get drowned out? And if that's the case, that's the case, that's just what it is, but I'm not sure.
I I'm in the neutral form.
But I guess it's two, two to three. So, you know, is it two to three and then it gets submitted as negative, or is it two to three that gets submitted as two to three? Two neutral, three negative. Alright, that's that's what it is.
So I I'll make a motion, I wanna make a motion to. Um, make a negative recommendation to the ZDA regarding this project. It is a front patio in the setback, within the setback. Adding to that, not within approach.
And I would also be very, with point where you said that, you know, we're not in favor of expansion and not conforming in the front yard. That could um continue, or maybe this project looks fine, but then that's one, I mean, that's one, so.
Is there a second for a negative recommendation?
I'll second.
Now, all in favor? So there were two opposed?
The motion says this is a negative recommendation.
That'll still go to them, they have our feedback on it, right, so it's still going to them.
Alright, thank you, I'm gonna give you back here.
Sorry to make you sit through color choices, yeah, and all of that.
You really needed to hit that, so I'm sorry to make. It's the details that matter, the details.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Although I do have a garage, I almost shutters it back on the ceiling, so I have a garage again. We stood to our decision, we didn't change anything by the building color.
It's just so odd to me.
They keep continuing.
Is it, is it that?
When you're presenting the budget.
Okay, guys. We have a couple more things to go through, so um, before we get to the minutes, there is one other um. Business that needs to be.
Yeah, uh, Bernie, Bernie has previously been through the board to have. Lot line adjustment approved between two properties, the two adjacent properties he owns. And I went through the process, the board approved the lot line adjustment. And under the village law, there are certain type requirements for Bernie. To get things finalized, submit it to the county and. Because of.
Because of the ninety days, he but he wasn't able to submit it within the ninety days and the subdivision code. Says that um he would need to seek an extension. Of the approval, if it's beyond ninety days, so ultimately that's what he's looking to.
This reapproved.
You approve for another ninety days. You can extend it up to two ninety-day periods. Almost a year.
This is probably over down by the.
One oh five and one oh seven mechanic street. So he's just looking uh to extend it formally to to be sure that there's no problem because he's.
Alright, do you need an official vote?
Should let's make a motion to to confirm.
I'll send to approve the extension of time for the lot line adjustment.
The approval, yeah.
The approval that we already granted for the lot line adjustment for a ninety-day period.
For one fifty-one seventeen.
For one fifty-one seventeen.
It's a section of code, so yes, so thank you, so that formally on the record. Alright, so now the minutes. Did anybody have any other questions? So, so I'm making a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, second.
All in favor?
If there's anything else, the next meeting is the number first, I've already have some information for you. Before I adjourn, I just want you to give this. Distribute this now. This is going to be um the site plan and sign information. For two oh seven West Genesee Street, the former Papagaios. I don't have the actual applications. He does, he dropped these off today and he'll be getting the rest of the information, so.
Before they come, can you have them watch? Every meeting that these guys across the street pay for.
Who's the architect?
Oh, yeah.
Good question. They're really doing this quite a bit, let's 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 just check their box in the back.
Alright, so we have said there's nothing else, and then you all the business I had.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Is anybody actually opposed to adjuring the meeting?